Okay, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spata, Chair of the Needham Planning Board. And I'm calling the October 29th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham Channel and is being recorded for publication later viewing and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. And I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert?
Present.
Adam Block?
Present.
Artie Crocker?
Present.
Justin McCollum?
Present.
And with us is staff Lee Newman and Alexander Cle. So tonight, we have our agenda for tonight, we have a public hearing for the major project site plan special permit, number 202401 for the Needham Housing Authority property at Zero Linden Street and Five Chambers Street, regarding the request to redevelop the NHA Linden Chambers property. And this is, this hearing has been continued from the September 24th and October 15th Planning Board meetings. We then have Board of Health, they have an article to discuss that they sent to us for discussion possibly. Minutes, report from Planning Director and Board Members in correspondence. So with that, we should begin with the public hearing, which is, so do we need to have a motion to continue? No?
Because it was continued.
Okay, so we're continuing the hearing for the Needham Housing Authority for Linden Street and Chambers Street. So I think we have additional information, is that?
Yeah, I think we voted to continue for the narrow purpose of just reviewing the change in the layout that the Fire Department had recommended.
Okay, so who the petitioners like to come up and make a presentation of the changes?
I'm Bob Smart, I'm here for the Needham Housing Authority. And, let's see, Dan Chen is here, who will talk about the changes and the dealings with the Fire Department and with the Department of Public Works. We also have Brad McCord and Betsy Collins as part of the team. And I think Reg, maybe, he may be joining us on Zoom. He's at some kind of an event with his wife, I think, in Boston. And he said he would tune in, and I said, you don't need to, but he said he was going to, so we may see him at some point. But hopefully, if there are any questions, we'll be able to answer them. I guess, you know, other than the dealings with the DPW and the Fire Department, the only other thing that has happened is Alex asked me to, you know, provide some language for the, for a Planning Board decision, having to do with, you know, whether we comply or not with the Site Plan Review standards under the bylaw. And so, we have, we have provided that. I guess in terms of status, the only other thing to report is that Conservation Commission has voted to issue an order of conditions approving the project. And I believe you have correspondents from the last few days from the DPW and from the Fire Department saying that they're happy with the changes to the site plan that have been made. So I'm hoping that what will happen is after you hear the, after you hear the fairly, fairly brief presentation and there's any, any discussion you're going to have, that you close the hearing and actually vote on the application tonight and then direct the, the Planning Director and Assistant Planning Director to draft a decision for your next meeting. So, Dan, want to talk about what's happened since the last, since the last meeting?
Great, thank you. Dan Chen, BH+A Architect. And I'm going to share my screen, if I can, just to specifically focus on.
The microphone is, yeah?
Yeah, the microphone may help.
Hold on, time out, time out, time out. The microphone is for the purposes of recording for the Needham Channel, it's not for amplification in the room. So, there is some kind of a radio switch.
So you need to project Dan's speech into the microphone.
Okay, I'll talk louder.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm actually, my joke is much louder in Chinese, so.
Not tonight, please.
Okay, so, this is what we have in terms of the, I'm sorry, I think we're talking about grading and drainage because that's the first thing, is this was what was submitted in the Site Plan Review. And this is what we currently have modified, is we have effectively, effectively doubled the capacity of the storm water management system, which now will be able to take the 25-year rainstorm entirely on-site, which is a drastic improvement. To remind the board, the original design, the previous design, met and exceeded the state requirement as well. And so, this is in, per town's request, that, that we were able to add and double the capacity. One other thing I would like to mention here is that, at this, at this capacity, anything sort of beyond, there's a reason why we chose this, this capacity, because it's sort of at that threshold of diminishing return. If you continue to increase the, the storm drainage capacity, it can't really take any additional water, because now we have essentially absorbed all of the pervy, or impervious surfaces from the site. So this is why a 4,200 cubic, cubic feet for the, for the capacity is where we, we ended up. The next slide is on the Fire Department changes. And this slide here, you'll see what's in orange is the, is the change subsequent to the Site Plan Review submission. So here you see that the, the fire lane extended further into a bit, into the back of the building on both the north side of the site, as well as the south side, which serves as Phase 1B of the building. And we also widened these concrete path back here, the sidewalk, and that is also helps to, it helps with the ladder axes per Fire Department. So these are, these are the changes that, that subsequent to what we submitted for the Site Plan Review.
So that's, thank you. So I have here from the Fire Department, I'm just gonna read it. The, at the meeting on October 9th, the Needham Fire Department made a request to extend the two fire lanes around the backside of the proposed building as much as possible, without encroaching on the 25-foot wetland buffer zone. This request was made due to the town's purchase of a new tower ladder truck. Since that meeting, the Linden redevelopment team and the Fire Department have worked together on a solution. So the two 20-foot wide fire lanes from Linden Street to the east side of the site have been extended slightly to allow a fire truck to approach the back corner of the building, specifically the northeast corner of Phase 1A and the southeast corner of Phase 1B. So this will allow the ladder truck, which has a reach of approximately 100 feet, better coverage of the back. The Fire Department confirmed that a full vehicular fire lane is not required behind the 1A and 1B buildings. Sufficient emergency vehicle access is provided at three sides of the building. The second item was that the two new fire hydrants shown on the original SPR drawings will remain, but the SC, the southeast hydrant location has been adjusted to accommodate the extended fire lane. And then number three, the wider sidewalks shown in Revision 1 have been modified slightly to accommodate the new extended fire lanes. So, any questions on either one of these items?
I do have a question. When you showed the storm water management plan, was that planned for the entire site, for both phases?
Yes, it's for both phases, Phase 1A and 1B.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the Fire Department or the stormwater? Paul?
I have no questions.
No, Artie?
The only question I had was, but it's already been addressed now, is I just wish that the, the access lanes going back to the back of the building, where they're only supposed to be for emergency vehicles, Fire Department, I wish we had done, had the same treatment we did over at Muzzy Ford. That would have some type of pervious, some type of paver that allows for growth to, to take place, but also be strong enough for the fire, fire trucks to drive through. And the Fire, the Fire Chief said he prefers, you know, the method that's in there, there. That's just a preference, because on Muzzy Ford, we did that, that seemed to be perfectly fine in this case. If we did that here, that would give additional drainage and would also visually look better. So I just wish you had stuck with that, for this as well.
Is there any way that you could do an add, an add alternate to see if it would be, is it because of cost?
Of extending?
Of having it be allowed to be a permeable paver?
Yeah, there's, there's special blocks that are designed to be structurally sound for Fire Departments, but also allow, allow essentially the grass and growth to come through.
We've had mixed, mixed reviews with grasscrete, I think is what you're referring to. Both, either it's a plastic surface that's, that allows the grass to grow, or some sort of paving system that is also provides, yeah, with the holes that provides enough low, wheel bearing, low capacity for the fire truck. And the, the reason I said as the mixed results is when the plow comes, sometimes it does destroy this, these grasscrete systems. The, what currently we have here, I believe in these, in these fire lanes, is a, is a permeable asphalt system that we're looking into as, so that it, it does, it does help with sort of ma, sort of the, the water runoff. However, it does require maintenance, and this is why I, I'm, I'm saying that we're looking into that system.
So you are looking into more of the block style?
No, the permeable.
No, the permeable asphalt system.
Oh, just the permeable.
Right. And, and the, the other thing is that in the storm water calculation, however, we, we're not taking into account the permeable surfaces of the fire lanes. So those fire lanes are assumed to, to have runoff, and this is per Needham bylaw. And therefore, the storm water management system that we currently are providing is, is assuming or is, is treating these fire lanes as if they are impermeable surfaces.
Maximized.
I'm satisfied with the AHJ, the need of fire to, regarding Muzzy, that they didn't have the same apparatus. There's obviously now a different apparatus with the tower ladder truck that they acquired since Muzzy. But, and also, Muzzy was a different building, you know, in terms of, so I'm very satisfied that the chief has said this. And also, there's a question of whether we can really, that's within our, our power to extend the fire lane. It's not, I don't know if that's actually true.
Well, it's not extending the fire lane, it's changing, it's requesting the material.
Oh, the material, oh, I thought you meant.
No, 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 just simply changing the material, since there was a, since there was a lot of discussion of a concern about the, the storm water in general, and also the fact that this is coming off of Linden Streets, so something that, just the visual having it look a little more pleasant in general, since it's not going to be for normal access. So it might actually be used very, in theory, it will not be used very often.
So, yeah, so that's where I misinterpreted it. So other than that, I'm, I'm satisfied with the changes that were put in, put into place.
And Adam?
I, I'm, I'm fine.
You're fine?
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate that you've doubled the capacity of the stormwater. And I think that, looking at the permeable asphalt, to see if it's, you know, operationally, and if it's an opportunity, that would even be better. But, so I think, I think, is there a motion?
I need to say, I just want to recognize that there's an email from the Fire Chief on the fire dated October 24th. And also, there's been a letter, I think, from the Engineering Department on the fire lane, also acknowledging their acquisition to it, also dated October 24th, 2024.
And there's also an email from, from a resident as well, asking about the relocation program.
Oh, yes.
Okay, email is dated.
October 15th.
Thank you.
273.
Okay, great. So with that, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So, move.
Second.
So, motion by Adam, second by Justin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so, what are the next steps?
So, I think I'd just like some, the plan is for us to have a draft decision in front of you at the next meeting, which is on Wednesday, I forgot the date, November, November 7th, November 7th. And, six, excuse me. And so I would just like, I would like some direction from the Board. I don't want you to actually vote the relief tonight, but if you could just give me some direction on what you would like to see, any special conditions you'd like to see included in it, and we will prepare an affirmative decision, I'm assuming that's where you're going on all this.
Okay, so.
Will you like to speak?
I think we, we closed the hearing.
Well, I thought we would have the opportunity for public comment as we did with the other meetings.
We did, we had public comment last time, the only reason we kept it open was to get clarification on two items.
This is a, this is a whole new plan that's presented to you though.
It was the same, it's the same plan.
The only difference relates to an additional storm water management capacity and an addition of the treatment for the fire safety vehicles at the rear. But otherwise, it's the same plan.
But we had that last week. No, we did.
It was, it was.
Excuse me, excuse me a second. We, we showed it la, it was shown last week, we were getting confirmation from the Fire Department and from DPW that, that they didn't have any objection to it. But that was exactly what was shown last week, am I incorrect?
No, that's true.
Yeah, but it wasn't shown to the people here that are attending.
Yes, it was, it was shown to the entire public, and it was also on the, on the Needham Channel.
So they did, they amended the fire lane. My understanding of what Mr. Chen just said is they amended it in some way to allow for the fire lane to be changed. Where's that report?
It's in the packet.
That's new information since the last meeting we had here, which I.
So the design changes are in the, excuse me, Mr. Chair. The design changes are actually in the packet, which is available online.
And it's been available since last Thursday.
Does Mr. Chen have a copy of it so that we can see, or is the lawyer?
We, we don't have, we don't, we don't distribute things in the meetings, but everything is in the packet that was here on Thursday. The only, they had the same design, the only thing was the approval of those two town entities. So that's why we held it open.
We were never informed that a packet would be available.
Packet is always available.
We've been discussing it at the last meeting.
See what's online at the Needham Planning Board.
And you can also come into the office and request a copy of the file.
Just one question I had that arose.
Natasha, we need people in a microphone, because anybody watching or Donna, they can't. We, we're closed for public comment, so I, I mean, we have a.
Okay, but I have a question that arose while you were saying this, and I should have a right to post a question to someone.
About process?
No, only because with a new truck, the fire truck, that's, that's accommodating.
So it's, we can't address anything regarding it, because the public comment is, has been closed.
Was that put in the legal notice for this meeting, that there would be no public comment here? Because I didn't recall reading that or seeing that anywhere.
At the last meeting, we discussed that we would keep it open to get that information, to make sure that the Fire Department and that the, am I wrong on this? And that, and that the, the Public Works would approve it. So those were the two items, the only reason we kept it open.
But you didn't say that there would be no public comment.
Shut it down or open it up?
That's my point.
To what?
I think we either have to shut it down.
Yeah, we can.
Or, or open it.
Or open it, but if we do, they have to come to the mic, because that's the issue.
We've just voted to close the hearing.
Yeah, we just voted to close it, and we.
It's a little bit unfair. I just want to say that you did make the, you did make the statement that you're waiting for the reports. I understand that, but you didn't say at the last meeting that there would be no public comment.
We said that the only reason we were keeping it open was to get the reports. I think that's clear, that that was the only reason we were keeping it open.
We can't crosstalk when people can't hear.
We got the reports, we're closing the hearing.
It may be clear to you missed out, but, but it wasn't clear to us.
Well, I'm sorry if you didn't understand it.
Do I have a question?
We need to.
So we can't, we can't have, we can't have a discussion with the public when we close the public hearing unless we.
We have to continue with our business, I'm sorry.
All right, this is a point of order, or information, or whatever, if I may. There was a commissioner, a Conservation Commission, or Conservation Committee meeting, and they closed their hearing as well. They did not make a decision to be rendered to presumably the Planning Board here. And they said they would entertain additional information provided by me and the Resident Association to be communicated to you. And the reason why I'm asking this is, are you considering an extension? Because the deadline is now another 45 days away. Are you, are you considering not making a decision in order to, I'm requesting that we have the opportunity to?
Lee, the ConCom, does it implicate that we can't make a decision?
No, it doesn't implicate, no.
No, so that's a completely separate department that is reviewing it separately.
Our, our procedure from here on out is, we're going to have a discussion right now about some perhaps conditions that we would impose on the applicant, on the project. After that, after that, we will vote to give direction to the Town Planner to draft a decision. And, and then, at our next meeting, we'll review the decision. And if the decision is sufficient, then we will vote it up or down. And if it needs more time and more work, then we'll have to continue. But we, hopefully, we would anticipate resolving the decision. And vote, and voting, and voting the relief that's been requested, and voting on the actual decision itself.
And, and let me reiterate, the decision will be in the packet, which will be online at needhamma.gov the Thursday before our next meeting.
Yeah, it might be Friday.
It might be Friday, it might be the Friday before the next meeting. Because our next meeting is on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday. So we'll be available.
So we need to.
No.
No, it's two weeks from now.
It's November, November 6th.
November 6th.
The day after Election Day.
November 6th, that is when we'll be looking at the decision. So you're drafting the decision for us to review it.
So the decision should be online then, this?
When the packets are posted, so probably on Friday.
Which will be this Friday.
So let's now move forward, Madam Chair, and you have a question for us about what specific condition and direction you're looking for us. So. I don't want to have any special conditions.
Oh, I thought you were, you were thinking. Any special conditions beyond, no, I don't either.
I, I don't have any either.
Do you have any special conditions besides the pavers to review?
The pavers to review, what, excuse me, I'm curious, what type of signages are going to be for as far as traffic going into the fire lane from Linden Street? Since it is a direct access fire lane, and it's not going to be closed off, what's going to happen as far as that signage? And I think we already looked at the landscaping, I think you have a pretty good landscaping plan, I believe. I am, I am, I am satisfied that this project will improve the neighborhood's storm water problem. I, I am convinced at that, very much so. It doesn't mean that it's, you know, the neighborhood is not perfect, but it's, but it'll be better than what it was before. I wish it was perfect, but it'll be better than what it was before. I don't have any, any other conditions, I can't think of any right now. And again, all due respect to everyone here, that I was afraid to even, I was hesitated even bringing up the issue with the fire lane traffic and changing the material to pavers and so forth, because we, because that wasn't part of our normal discussion today, I just felt compelled to do it. So we did close the hearing in general, looking for just a few additional things. And I think in fairness, I think, I mean, I, I think we did our job as far as what our responsibility was then. That doesn't mean you cannot email us with your questions or thoughts, you can still do that. It just can't be part of the official meeting that we held for this. But you can still send us information, you can always communicate to any of us, okay? Okay, this, you know, maybe. Of course, of course, we respond if we can. So it's just, so I can't think of anything else, though.
No, we, we acknowledge all of the correspondence that we get at every meeting.
Thank you.
So, and, and thank you for all of the support in the process from the community and for all of your comments. They really helped us shape some of the decisions that they made, including double capacity of storm water, which I think is pretty critical, so. So with that, is there a motion?
Paul, did you have any?
No, he already said no.
On the side, I think so.
No, that's okay.
I have a question. Bob, were there during the course of the hearing items that we, that you anticipated would be specific?
Well, you know, I, in, in the letter which I provide, provided to the Board today, and I think I, I think I actually provided this draft language at the, at the last meeting about, you know, dealing with the two-year lapse issue. So you, so that language is in the letter that I submitted earlier today. There's also language.
On that point, just before we move forward, Chris Heath, was Chris Heath going to review that? And did we get resolution from him?
I'll, I'll resolve that between now and the draft. I, I have Bob's, I have Bob's suggested language, and I'll review it with Chris.
Okay, great. And, and, and the other thing is that, you know, I actually went to the Children's Hospital decision to look at the language there about, you know, the permit, assuming you, you approve this, running with the land and being applicable to all the successors and assigns. And so I, I simply asked that, that the Board import that language in this decision. So you have that language.
I look forward to reviewing it, I think so. Lee, I think, do you have enough direction?
Yes, I'm pretty much a standard approval of a new construction project with all of our traditional conditions, and some of the special items that Bob's called out.
And when will that be online for the public to see?
I, I have it done on Friday. It will be for the, it will be in the packets.
Okay, so on, in the Planning Board's site, there'll be a package that you can, the public can see.
The Friday before the hearing.
The Friday before the hearing.
Not, not this Friday, the Friday before the hearing.
No, this Friday, this Friday.
It's next week.
This Friday.
Our hearing is.
It's this Friday, is this China?
I was sold this bill of goods here, no, I was sold every other week.
Okay, so with that.
We all were.
So with that, is there a motion? Do we need to close this, or? So you're all set, so.
We're just waiting for.
So it's concluded, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is the Board of Health, this Article 1 about regulation affecting smoking and the sale and distribution of tobacco products, which I read up, and it's the nicotine-free generation that sales would go from 21 years old to a gatekeeping age, not allowing people of a certain age to buy nicotine in Needham. So what's our purview in this? Why were we sent this?
We have no purview, I'm not sure why they, hey, why they, why they shared it with us. I think this wanted you to be aware of it, to see if you wanted to comment on this proposed regulation they were proposing to change, or.
Have other, have other communities that have enacted this?
Can we wait until everybody's left, because I'm having trouble hearing you guys from the other table?
So one of the things Lee just said is that we really have no purview.
I heard Lee.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear Adam.
So, I was, I'm just curious whether or not other municipalities in Massachusetts that enacted this, did they, did the Planning Board participate in the process?
Excuse me, we need to, we need some, we can't hear each other.
Adam, thank you.
Okay.
So.
I don't know what the process was in other towns.
Okay.
Brookline did it. I think Brookline's one of the only towns in Massachusetts to have done this.
Please leave the door closed.
Ma'am, we need to have the door closed because we can't hear.
Well, fine, I just lost something very valuable, so.
There's just people that are talking outside, we have a hard time hearing, so.
Have it? You have it? Good. Glad you recovered it. So it doesn't sound like we have a role in.
So it doesn't sound like we have a role in it, um, does that mean?
Well, they're asking us if we have an opinion, so I guess if we want a role in it, we can, we can give them comments. They, they are having another hearing at the end of November.
Yep.
I guess the question is.
Question is, do we want to?
Do we want to and is it related to planning?
Well, it's only related to planning in the sense that it affects businesses in town and we have some planning about the businesses and how they operate in town, especially in the districts that we do special permits for. I don't know that we have a lot of convenience stores in our purview, probably mostly in the ZBA.
But it's operational, right?
It's also gas stations.
Gas stations, yeah.
But I, I mean, I think the underlying question is, you know, that age limit and setting a precedent that someone. What's the, uh, what's the cutoff? You have to be twenty, is it twenty-one by a certain date?
Well, it's twenty-one years old to a gatekeeping age, not allow, and they said it could be, you know, January first of twenty twenty-four, uh, two thousand four, or whatever it is.
It's not an age limit. It's, it's a limit of if you're born after a certain date, you cannot buy cigarettes and need them.
Right.
You can be sixty years old.
And still not buy.
And still not be able to buy cigarettes here if you.
Another forty years.
So.
But isn't that operational for, I mean, how does that affect us? Or what, why would we have a comment on it, I guess?
I don't, I don't see how, you know, I don't see how it affects the planning. Individually, we'll, we'll have our opinions on it, but offhand, I'm just not sure how the planning board has an opinion on it, it ourselves, especially since we're just going to talk about it then. I don't think we have, I don't think, you know, whatever other town it's been, what's the effect? I can see, I can, you know, again, individual opinions, yes, but I don't see the planning board having an opinion, certainly not at this point, I don't see that.
Do you see the planning board having an opinion?
In this particular matter, no, I don't think so, I think maybe on other initiatives. I mean, this is, the writing is on the wall for, um, you know, the eventual downfall of tobacco industry and, you know, and, you know, the public health issues that are occurring because of tobacco use. I forget, did it go into vape usage or anything, it was just cigarettes?
I just saw nicotine.
No, it's all tobacco products.
It's all tobacco products, that's what I'm quoting, okay.
It includes e-cigarettes.
Right.
Now, if you want to talk about high fructose corn syrup or something like that, I'll talk about that.
Right, but individually, we have opinions, but does the planning board have purview over this and do we want to have an opinion as a planning board?
Are we saying that, that any sort of prohibition is going to restrict or adversely impact a business in town? I think that's the only, that's what kind of, Paul, we were talking about where the planning board might have some sort, I.
They discussed that in their materials.
Yep, it is, yeah.
Their opinion on that.
Um, I don't know, I could certainly entertain a conversation, but I, at this point, I don't think, um, I don't have that, I don't share that.
So I'm hearing that we direct Lee and Alex to respond to the, um, Health Department, the Board of Health, by saying, thank you for letting us know, thank you for supplying the materials, the planning board has no comment.
I think so, I think that's, does everyone, anyone disagree?
Yeah.
Okay. So Lee, you're.
Yep.
You have any information? Okay, so meeting minutes, are these the, I didn't see the meeting minutes in the packets, so are they the meeting minutes from the last meeting that we, it was too long of a minute?
I don't think they're any meeting minutes, they're just always, always on the agenda.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we voted the minutes last time.
I thought so, but I didn't see any, but I'm like, I wonder if we, we close. And then the report from the planning board and board members, so Lee and Alex, do you have any?
Um, I wanted to talk to you about, um, it's not the next meeting, it's the meeting after next, the nineteenth. The nineteenth, yeah, we're trying to think about, um, there's a number of things I think we need to get done, um, one of which is to make the appointments on the large house study committee. Um, and I wasn't sure how you wanted to manage, um, the at-large members that, because, um, to decide who you want to appoint to those positions. If you want to have a chair and the vice chair, you know, interview them and make a recommendation to the full board, whether you want to actually do those interviews at a, at a planning board meeting. Um, so I wanted some direction on that, but I think we need to move that large house study committee forward. And also, I think it's important that we have a meeting where we talk about our goals and kind of come up with a calendar and a schedule for what we hope to get done over the course of the next year. Looking at the, at the spring town meeting, what's going to be required and then at the fall town meeting, so that we have some direction on what projects we're going to pursue. So I thought that, that meeting would be a good meeting to get that done.
The nineteenth. So the first thing, I guess the question is, are we receiving applica, or resumes from people that are interested?
We have gotten for the, we have, there are five at-large positions and we've gotten, so far, we've gotten five.
Six.
Six.
Assuming Jean said she applied.
Yeah, six, so we've gotten six people that are interested.
And how many at-large positions do we have, is it one?
Five, I think.
Oh, five.
What, what, remind, I don't remember, sorry. Uh, I don't remember what the remit was, was it just five people at large or was it like someone from?
No, they had, I think, Patty.
A developer?
We had a lot, it was a big committee.
I think those were different.
Those are.
We had different skills across it, Alex got his background.
Yeah.
Is this a select board?
Do we have one member or two members?
We have two.
From the planning board?
We have two from the planning board.
Two.
And two from the select board.
And that's, that's already Justin.
Here, do you want me to just, um, read you the whole?
What's that?
We just nominated you again, no kidding.
It'll cost you a hundred bucks.
No.
It's two planning board members, two select board members, a designer review board member or designee, a finance committee member, ZBA member, and then the five at-large are a real estate broker, a developer, an architect, and two at-large.
Okay. And so the five that we've received.
We've gotten six.
Six, do they fill, do we fill all of the positions that we've requested?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know.
So that would just be.
And, and it's still open, so we'll probably get a couple.
When is it, when is it technically closed?
Didn't technically close, it's up on the town's website, it was like, until we, until we got enough people.
So, until we start.
Until we.
And how are we, how are we advertising it?
It's on the town's webpage.
So we can reach out some more from you two.
So, Madam Chair, I, I don't have a problem with, I mean, the way that I deal with my other committees that I chair is, is, you know, me, the staff liaison will interview sometimes with the select board members because it's, that's part of the purview of, of that. Um, I don't think we need to involve the whole.
Well, that's how, that's how we did home, and then, and then once, and then you make a recommendation.
Correct.
I think that would be fine with me, if that's okay with everyone.
That's, that's, that's my opinion, but.
Yeah, no, that's how we did home and that's how we did the housing plan.
Right.
So it feels like that's, I mean, I'm okay with that if everyone else is okay with it.
Okay, then we can do that protocol, but I'd like to dedicate that, I mean, no, I'd like to maybe come back with a recommendation for that meeting and get, get the committee appointed and, um, and look at what our goals are and our work program for the next year.
Right, so a couple of things that came out of, um, the, the ADU that just passed, I think we need to revise that. I just want to bring up a couple of things that Adam had brought up before and that, and that we have. The other pieces is we talked about Crescent Street and the rezoning of that, depending upon what happens in the next, um, ten days, um, right? And the Hersi we talked about, so, and then.
I would, no, no, I'm, I, I, I think personally, if we're talking about Hersi and perhaps Crescent, that we just, we let some of the chips fall and see, you know.
Right, but, but I just wanted to tell, if, if, if it gets, if there's no, if they don't contest it, right?
Right.
And it passes, these are the things that we talked about that we would do, and the nineteenth will know what's going on.
Sure, I'm, yes, and, and we could have a discussion about those, because I, I don't think we should right now do anything.
No, we're not, I'm just saying, this is for the nineteenth, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that, that's, I mean, it all depends on what happens in the next ten days.
So, so.
What do we have on the seventh besides the?
On the sixth.
Decision, on the sixth, besides the decision for the Needham Housing Authority?
I'll tell you in six seconds.
The sixth is the Wednesday.
Yep.
Just for everyone to remember. And then the next one is the nineteenth, which is a Tuesday.
Right.
On the sixth, um, that's really it, possibly review of Board of Appeals if they get us comments, um.
So do we want to discuss some of these on the sixth instead of waiting until the nineteenth?
I don't know if, will we know?
Well, it's.
Well, we're not going to have time to interview the recommendation by Wednesday.
No, you're talking about the other items.
I'm talking about the other items.
The planning priorities, so part of it is.
We're not going to know about the, about the referendum.
When will we know?
But part of, like, we can also act independently, like, we don't have, the conversation about those items are not, is not restricted by whether or not there's a referendum. On that, from that perspective, I, in terms of our bang for our buck for planning, I think that, you know, Hersi's a thing, there may be, there's some opportunity there, I get it, some opportunity for Crescent, I get it. But there is a much bigger opportunity in front of us, which also came about as a recommendation from home, to deal with, like, Great Plain Avenue, and I think we should focus.
Well, the town center, we also, that was a piece that we.
I wasn't done yet, so, sorry, so from Great Plain Avenue, from that post office, on the, is it the west side? And then on the east side, you know, to Warren Street, like we had talked about, so.
Yeah, but we also, that should be also part of the whole town center because that's an overlay in that area, right?
There are, there are overlays there, yeah.
The center overlay. I think we just need to make a list, if everyone can make a list and then we can prioritize it as a group.
We also have the spreadsheet that I built.
Yeah.
So, you know, the staff can.
I have them, yeah.
Manipulating it.
So I think, I think what it is, is like, let's, can you share that again for everyone to?
Yeah, do you want, yes, I updated it, um, so it's, the timeline is current because it was like, had all of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
But in doing so, some of the notes are, I'll just send you the original and the one I was working on, because that way, nothing that I might have deleted. Yeah, because I'm, I'm midway, so I'll send you, yeah, just my draft and whatever.
And I think, I think, you know, things that we have talked about before as far as going down towards Wexford Street area, I mean, it sounded like we thought there could be some, some change going on down there with some zoning, which could possibly bring, again, bring change down there, bring some new, new construction going on down there. So I think we should think about that as well.
Yeah.
Because they are, they're obviously two completely different areas of town and two completely different controversies. Forgive me for saying that, but the fact is, two completely different mindsets as far as what maybe people may want to talk about.
Yeah.
And just to keep on your radar, we do, we have applied for a grant, you know, from EOEA, um, to get money to hire a consultant to help us do the parking. We haven't heard, the parking are going to hear by the end of October, we haven't heard, but maybe we'll hear by, by, by our next meeting. And also as a follow-up from, depending upon what happens with the MBTA Communities Act, I think we need to develop really detailed design guidelines for these individual districts and get that project moving. So there's design guidelines that I think have to happen in conjunction with the zoning for the MBTA, that was just recently done on, on the, on a district level, and there's also this parking work that we may get the funds for.
Right, the other piece is, I know that we just went through this whole site plan review for MBTA Communities, which is based on a state mandate with as of right, but isn't that the same thing as the Dover Amendment? Shouldn't we review how we process the Dover Amendment in the same way?
Good, good point.
Because if we just didn't, shouldn't we be using something similar for Dover Amendment so that next time there's a project that requires that, then there's that guidelines.
We already have.
This gets to the whole list of what do we want to accomplish, what do we want to move forward for Spring Town Meeting, what do we want to move forward for next Fall Town Meeting?
But we need a list, yeah.
I think we need a list.
Well, we have.
With priorities.
We have the list that Adam put together.
Right, and new things have emerged from it, so we just need to add them, which is, I think, what you were adding to it. So I think everybody should look at it and prioritize what you think are the biggest items.
Is it too soon to say, let's get that done for, away from tomorrow, because?
Just the, just the list.
Just the list so that we can have something to talk about?
Well, you all have to tell me what you want on the list.
No, 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 but if you give us the list, then we can each.
I already emailed it to you.
Compile, right, so you have it.
Look at.
So we can all come with an idea of what we think are the, are the items and we can vote on.
So we can discuss it on next?
And we can discuss it next week.
Yeah, we can have a part one and a part two, yeah, that probably makes sense.
Yeah, let's get started on words, because, you know, time marches on here.
Okay, so I think, any board member reports, Paul?
No.
Artie?
No.
I don't have Wi-Fi.
Adam?
Uh, on the CEA, uh, um, Heidi Frail has volunteered to be chair, which is great. So the vice chair of the select board is now chair of the CEA, and Liz Elcock is the vice chair now.
Great. Well, Justin?
Uh, the Mobility Planning and Coordination Committee is doing its semi-annual, um, Transportation Summit, um, and where it's actually going to be a joint meeting of the Transportation Safety Committee, the Mobility Planning and Coordinating Committee, and the Rail Trail Committee. Uh, that's all going to have a, an open meeting together to kind of go over the status of transportation. It would be great if I had the date, I don't have the date on me, um, but I, I know, like, actually, you know what it is? I can't go because it's, uh, we fly into Orlando, it's, it's on the twenty-first.
No, it's on the twenty, yes.
That's what I meant. Um, yes, I'll be on a plane to Orlando that night, um, for my fiftieth birthday, and I'm celebrating universal.
Hey, happy birthday.
But yes, that will be the annual summit, I think the T, uh, location is TBD, I think they were going to maybe try to get powers hall, um, but.
Public safety, don't we?
Oh, public, okay, yeah, yeah, that's right, that's, yes, I did see that new today.
That's great.
So, yeah, and they do that meeting twice a year, so this is their.
That's great. It, it, with that group, and I, I don't have anything to report except just a quick question, would that group be a good group to coordinate with for the parking study?
That, you, we, that, yes, that, at least in terms of commenting and, and, yeah, so they do that in the spring and the fall, certainly, um, to seek comment, yeah.
Excellent.
A quick question, Adam, with, you and I had talked about this, with, with you being, you finally getting some breathing room as far as the CEA, um, did you want to stay on the CEA or do you want someone else to take over the CEA?
Uh, I'm still called to stay, to sit on the CEA.
Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Everyone.
Second, third.
Okay, so all in favor say aye. Thank you, everyone.
I think this is the short, one of the shortest meetings we've ever had.
Amazing.
It was actually where it was actually technically a real, real meeting.